Good afternoon, everybody. This is a meeting of the planning and zoning commission. Today is February the third of twenty twenty-two. It is approximately six oh two, and I'm calling this meeting to order. Can we have roll call, please? Yes.
Mr. Erasmo Guerriel?
Present.
Jorge Dominguez? Mike Barron? Abraham Lugo?
Present.
Johnny Arvise?
Present.
Ms. Wang?
Present.
Mr. Larry Valina?
Here.
Ms. Annela Zada Paz?
Present.
Ms. Anna Guerriel? So, Mr. Chairman, for the record, we do have four.
Thank you. I know that Jorge Dominguez texted me a little while ago. He got tied up at the ranch with some busted water lines. And so he was not gonna be able to make it. I'm not sure if anybody else called in for an excuse?
Yes, actually, every single one of them that tapped and asked for.
All right, so then can we have a motion to excuse them?
And I so move?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is a pledge of allegiance. Everybody can please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just. All right, the next item that we have is the approval of the minutes of February the sixth and January the twentieth.
I move we approve the minutes.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Does anybody sign up for citizens' comments?
No.
All right. Moving to item number six, consideration of the following preliminary plots and preliminary replats. Six A, preliminary consideration of the plot of Lot One, Block One, Alexander Commercial Subdivision, Phase sixteen. Intent is commercial. Just a second, they're gonna make a little.
For the record, applicant is D and J Alexander Investments. Engineer is Armando Guerra, premier engineering surveying. Proposed use is commercial. The zoning for this one lot development is B three. Location view. Area view. Street view. Proposed flat. Comments on planning. Traffic. And the proposed motion.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir?
Armando Guerra for the record with premier engineering, just though we concur with Saps comment.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the engineer of record, commission? If not, what are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. I was gonna take item seven en masse, but since I could not really read the plots that well, I'm gonna take them one by one.
Okay.
There's a few that I have questions on, because I could not see clarity on them.
Right, the package was.
It was very bad. I already told only that we need better clarity and better package.
This was completely different than what I saw.
Exactly. I couldn't make heads. Even with magnification of of the stuff, couldn't couldn't get it. Anyway, we're gonna go through them one by one.
Yes, sir.
All right, item seven eight, final consideration of the plot of Port Grande subdivision phase two, unit two, the intent is industrial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant is Majestic Laredo Logistics Center. Engineering is premier engineering. Proposed use is industrial, and the zoning for this seven lot development is M two. That is our location view. Area view. Street view. The proposed flat. And the proposed motion.
Can you go back to the aerial view? Isn't the entrance to the part further up where you're showing the picture? And you're pointing to something different than the map? You're you're pointing to the to the actual track at the facility.
Right.
And the entrance to that area is 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 what you showed at the front. So where exactly is the seven lot?
Right. We have the engineer here. Could you please address the commission, Mr. Asen?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Edward Garza, with premier engineering here on behalf of Majestic Realty. Commissioner Valina, I'll get your question.
Where exactly is the seven lot development?
The what? Seven lots. Oh.
The seven lots, where are they?
I guess on on this this little map here I have, we could probably explain a little bit. All right. There it is. There it is. So what you see there kind of shaded in this gray area on this map is basically the extension of Uniroil and Carriers Drive. And so we're plating the seven lots, it's about a hundred and sixty acres in size, pretty massive sized lots. Each lot is averaging over about thirty acres in size to these warehouses will be pretty good sized warehouses. So it's a pretty good substantial amount of land that we're plating with this phase. In this particular phase, we're also plating a north to south arterial road called Port Grande Boulevard. That's the beginning of now extension of a of a north to south roadway that will ultimately continue northward toward a hundred foot strip of land that Majestic Realty acquired right in between the Citi Laredo sewer plant and the Sofia industrial park. The projection of that road is to ultimately connect to the Lu- the Ruthiger interchange, which is correct, which is already in design by Textot. And and that's basically part of our overall master plan to continue this this roadway to the north to help alleviate some of that traffic congestion.
So this is only a piece of whatever the existing land that they own in the property?
Yes, sir. Majestic Realty, as you know, they purchased.
It's over a thousand acres or something.
It's almost two thousand acres for the original test track.
Yeah.
So right now, we're basically in phase two. Majestic will be plating this area over time, primarily because they also will be the builder of the warehouses. As they don't sell the warehouse and property, they will be a lifetime tenant. And so their goal is to develop one plat, one phase at a time. Phase one was plated about five years ago. So we don't expect to be plating or coming before you every year, every other year. It's basically gonna be also obviously market based. But if any indication is where we are today, you know, it may be another four or five years from now before we come see you again for another phase. However, there's, you know, we're already in talks and trying to help in develop solutions for traffic congestion, as we all know about. We're constantly talking with Textot, where they are and monitoring their progress on their designs and and working with the developed landowners to the north.
Okay. Let me ask you, Eddie, from this particular development, Port Grande is more or less how far away from this particular plat?
Can you go back to the aerial?
Are you talking about the the road itself?
Yeah. I'm just curious to see as you expand.
Yeah. I apologize for not bringing the master plan. I didn't I didn't, but if you have, let's see, in that particular map on the screen now. Yeah, let me let me work, see if I can work with this one. So in our plat, we're extending Uniroil and Carriers. And the the actual road that we're that we're bringing in is is a Port Grande Boulevard. It's a it's a minimum, it's a hundred foot right of way road designed for arterial type standards. Over three million ESO type roads. Uniroil and Carriers also are are ninety foot right of ways. And so these are pretty substantial type right of ways to handle the type of of traffic that would be expected and anticipated. But the the idea here is to continue the extension of 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 Port Grande Boulevard. And here at here at Sofia, there's a strip of land that that is owned by Majestic, and they purchased that independently when they acquired this property because they knew back then that there was gonna be a need for this type of road extensions. And so their property line terminates at what's known as Doctor's Road.
Okay.
I think most of you are familiar with that.
That's.
That's where their property line currently terminates. So they're they're, they plan to extend that up to Doctor's Road, and we're working with the landowners now to the north to start, and we've already been working on this for planning purposes.
Yeah.
To extend this road continuously to the north with, and then ultimately tie to some type of, it'll be like a loop road, not the outer loop, but a loop road that will connect to the Ruthinger interchange.
Yeah, okay.
To take the truck traffic to the north and to Ruthinger.
And basically, the property that you bought to get to Doctor's Road is on the west side of the sewer plant up there?
Yes, sir.
Is Doctor's Road on the the access east end for the prop- the three properties that are to the east?
Yes, sir. It's that's exactly what it is.
It's not a dedicated.
No, sir, it's not. And and that's part of the challenge.
Okay.
That we're working on.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for the engineer, from anybody? All right, if not, what are the wishes of the commission?
I move to approve.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, motion carries. Thank you. Next item, final consideration of the plat of Lomas Azul subdivision, unit six, the intent is commercial.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, Commissioner Aguiar is in attendance.
Let the record reflect that.
Thank you. Me.
Anna. Oh, sorry. We did excuse her.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant is ALS Laredo Holdings. Our engineer is Jerkson Engineering, Kenneth Art Jerkson. Proposed use is commercial. The zoning for this one lot development is B one. Location view. Area view. Street view. The proposed flat. And the proposed motion.
All right. Any questions from the commission? If not, what are the wishes?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, final consideration of San Isidro Southwest detention pond plating. Intent is for detention pond. Well, I think what you need to put on here is more like the intent is for drainage of X number of acres to be held. Where's the.
Into a detention pond.
You know, I mean, it's, okay, go ahead.
Applicant is San Isidro Southwest LTD. Engineer is Howland Engineering Surveying Company. Proposed use is detention ponds. The zoning for this three lot development is AG MP four. Location view. Area view. Street view. The proposed flat. And the proposed motion.
Okay. Any questions from anybody?
Yes, uh, is there anybody here to speak on their behalf? All right, the owner is San Isidro Southwest Limited, and are they going to commit it to maintaining this detention pond?
Let the city engineer answer that.
I'll defer to Mr. Ramon Chavez, who's the city engineer.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Ramon Chavez, city engineer. To address the question, developers are responsible to maintain these ponds for a minimum of two years. After that, they have an option to pretty much dedicate it to the city. In this case, I know that the council member for District Six is interested in in this land to further recreate it and to flag football fields. So that's something that's being discussed with the developer as we speak. But nevertheless, they will be responsible to maintain it for two years.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Isn't it the normal course of business in the city for the city to acquire the drainage event after the two years?
Yes.
Hasn't hasn't that been the practice?
Yes. Yes.
It's just the maintenance issue of it for two years. Then also the developer, and after that, automatically the city.
But the city always goes in and does.
Go ahead. Do you have another question?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Nobody else? Thank you, Ramon. All right. Motion.
I move to approve. Second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those against, motion carries. Next item is consideration of model subdivisions. Rule, the plat of Green subdivision phase ten B, the tennis residential.
For the record, applicant is W W Escondido. Engineer is Boa Consulting. Proposed use is residential. The zoning for this sixty-seven lot development is R one B. Location view. Area view. Proposed flat. And the proposed motion.
All right, put it back on the plat and take a look at that. I couldn't see that at all before.
Este no lo tenemos. Thought I had it on.
That's the best you can put this quality on this thing?
Can we fix it?
Do we have it in the other?
Still can't really see it.
Oh, really? Yeah, she says that's hard.
I guess my question to you is, why is?
That's the quality of the.
Is that what you got submitted, or what? Or why is it that the quality here is so bad that we can't even read it?
Yeah, even zoom, you can't.
Yeah, you can't. Even if you zoom it, it becomes worse.
So my understanding, talking to IT, is that when we put this on the on our website, we compress it, and when we compress it to put it, we lose.
Blurring.
We lose this blurriness. So we called the the software company to see if they can provide us with more capacity or to to, so that we could have more room in order to leave it as it is and and not have to compress and downlay. But that's what I'm hearing from IT, the compression is where we lose the quality.
Yeah, and that makes it real hard for us to really look at things.
Absolutely.
We can't. Today's was one of the ones that nobody could really read.
Do you, do you, did you bring a different?
I don't have it. Fernando Masur from. And definitely, definitely it's not there.
Yeah, those are all.
I don't feel like we can make a decision on anything.
I don't have it, but I can't really see it.
So basically, what happens with a model rules subdivision compliance? The utilities department has to guarantee that they can service these lots for thirty years. It's it's a federal law that we have to have that happen. And so this is a formality that we go through with each developer.
Federal law?
State. Oh, state.
It's state law.
I was thinking Henry.
Just to add to that, if I'm not mistaken, this is the third time that comes before this commission, right?
That's correct.
Went to preliminary, was approved, went to final, was approved. This is the third time that comes around.
That's correct. They they came here with final with no comments, and now they're just going through the formality of the model rules.
So is this outside the city limits and and they have submitted a request for annexation as well? Is that why you're using the model subdivision rules?
So all the, all these tracks are located inside the the city limits. So one of the requirements that the Water Development Board has placed both on the city and the county requirement is that, sorry. So some of the requirements that the Water Development Board, the matter of saying is placed on both the city and the county is that in having gotten the grants for the water and sewer for the colonias, they had to adopt the model rules. So in the model rules, there is additional certification where the city is certifying for thirty years that it will have the the capacity for these subdivisions for the on the residential side. So that's why we bring them just to the commission as a blessing and also notifying the public. We do attach a copy of the contracts executed by both the by the city just for public record that, yes, they are compliant with with those conditions from the state.
I thought it was just a condition of the county because the county doesn't have any subdivision power. And it wasn't a requirement of the city because the city always had subdivision power.
The city always had it, but it was my understanding that when they did get the grant, that the Water Development Board did want for the city to have the model rules in there anyway. So because they are, there are an appendix of.
Since I was in 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 state here, I don't remember that, but of course, it's been a long time.
I was in the nineties. Early nineties.
It was.
Early nineties, right after Marina Suco.
Late nineties, early two thousand.
It was after Marina Suco.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Because I was gonna ask, I guess since my time on the commission, I have not seen a model subdivision compliance come up on the agenda.
It's, okay, in your time, it hasn't, but it has.
Okay.
No, no, it has.
Because I was looking at this, I always, I noticed that there was a lot of new things that I had seen.
That's why I'm asking, because I don't recall that there was a requirement at that point.
I kind of figured that that was that was where you were going with it, but you'll see that the finals typically come back and you'll see it in subdivision. And and as you can see in the in the backup, we do attach copies of the contracts.
Yes, I saw that.
It does have the stipulation.
Is there somebody here from the water department?
Yeah.
The director? I don't know him. I've never met him.
Good afternoon, good evening. Arturo Garcia, utility's director. And I guess I'm here to answer your questions.
Back in the day, when the line extensions were done down three fifty-nine and into the area of Benitas, the water department was doing I U Es or something related to capacity.
L U Es.
L U Es, living unit equivalents.
L U Es.
Do you still do that?
We still do have living unit equivalents for the excess capacity that's available in those lines for both water and sewer.
So when you make a determination that you have enough capacity, are you saying that if you don't have it, you'll build it, but you don't have it now?
Well, we assess what capacity we have available, and that determines whether we can approve the subdivision or not. When I, when that thirty year letter comes to me, I have to have that available capacity. So as each subdivision comes in, I assess, do we have the capacity to serve that development for the next thirty years? So as.
When you're assessing the line, the sewer line on fourteen seventy-two and all the development that goes through there, I remember the initial line was a force main that used to come in.
Right.
And there was always an issue either at Lowe's or Dr. Ices because that line came all the way down. Does it still have that, or did you increase the capacity, or what did you do?
We make modifications, reroute some of those force mains and lift stations to to provide capacity in that line. We've been doing maintenance, insitute lining of some of these lines to allow for more capacity. Redevelopment has occurred in some of these areas. Some of these homes are not connected or there's no flow. So that we update that information on an annual basis to identify what capacity we have, what reserve we do have. And that's how we assess the service areas. And say along the Mines Road or whatever service area that I'm.
So at some point in time, there was discussion about creating a sewer plant in that area because of, by the time the sewage gets to the initial treatment site, it's septic, for lack of a better word.
Yes.
And you were gonna have some sort of inner plant somewhere to capture some of that activity. Is that idea all gone, and you're not gonna deal with that anymore?
We do have plans for other wastewater treatment plants that were referred to as the Manadas wastewater treatment plant. That currently was bid. I'm evaluating that plant. And once I have had a chance to make a recommendation, then I'll present that to council, towards the council.
So so your idea is not to continue bringing sewage all the way from the Mines Road all the way to Sacate Creek?
No. In fact, eventually, Sacate Creek, we want to decommission and take all that flow down to the south plant, which has more capacity. And it's construction of a, what we call our tunnel project, so that we get this large clip line that'll carry all that capacity flow to the south wastewater.
Hopefully, it'll not damage the River Vega line beyond repair.
No. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, what are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. One extension. Next item, consideration of the model subdivision rules for Winfield subdivision phase nine, intent is residential.
For the record, I'm sorry. For the record, applicant is.
Just a second.
Oh.
Are you good? Did you want to speak on the last item?
No, no, no.
On this one?
This one.
Okay, as soon as she finishes.
For the record, applicant is K R K Limited. Engineer is Boa Consulting. Proposed use is residential. The zoning for this one one hundred and nineteen lot development is R one. Location view. Area view. Street view. The proposed flat. And the proposed motion.
All right. Anybody have any questions on this plat? Will I put the plat back so they can look at it? No questions? All right. Motion, approve?
I move to.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, consideration of model subdivision compliance for the plat of D and J Alexander subdivision, unit thirteen, intent is residential.
See, something happened.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant is D and J Alexander Investments. Engineer is premier engineering surveying, Eduardo Gutierrez. Proposed use is residential. The zoning for this twenty-eight lot development is R one. The location view. Area view. Street view. The flat. And the proposed motion.
First.
Any questions by the commission members?
I'm kind of disoriented here. Which is not unusual.
What do you need?
Can we go back to the aerial view? That one?
Josefin.
That's not that there.
Es, aquí acaba, es, yo eschene.
Oh, I see where, I see, I see where it is.
Josefin es la última calle, está pegada hacia la orilla. Pero, the new subdivision sale por acá y está Casa Grande, y University.
Is University Boulevard extended at this point through this?
No. I. It ends right there.
It ends. It's just that little track.
Yeah. I think access to here is through Delphina.
Yes.
Through Delphina, yeah, because Josefin. University is not. Yeah, no. And there's another one, Mayela, no.
Mayela is at the very top.
At the very top.
Can you put the plat back? You know, look at the plat too. So the connection is Delphina.
Yeah, I was gonna buy a couple of lots here. So familiar.
Okay, so, yeah, it's Delphina is the connection. Imagine eventually, University Boulevard will connect to University on conservative.
Eventually.
Eventually. Right? Any questions? Got a motion, second? And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is the consideration of the model subdivision rules for the plat of La Font Residential subdivision phase one, intent is residential.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant is A M W Investments. Engineer is premier engineering. Eduardo Gutierrez. Proposed use is residential. The zoning for this thirty-two lot development is R one. Location view. Area view. Street view. The proposed flat. And the proposed motion.
Okay, I've got some questions on this, because as I look through the plat, I notice that they were gonna drain to the sides, to the rear. So can someone come up and explain to me how this is gonna work?
It's Armando Guerra with Premier Engineering, for the record. So basically, we're gonna have lots lots one through fourteen on the back, we're gonna be draining to the back where it's lot thirty-two. And then all that drains through the creek. And then the lots on the bottom on the south side, they're all draining to the street. And then they're all being collected on the on the cul-de-sac with a with a curb inlet, and it goes, and we have a an outlet structure at the creek location.
Okay. I did see in the plat that you had an F H A design on lots that were draining to the sides. So is that just?
No, that was just, they it is, they're not draining to the sides.
Okay.
They're draining lots.
They're going through the rear and then they're going to drain to the front of the other side?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that answers my question.
They're gonna drain from lot to lot, you said?
The ones on, the ones on the bottom, for the future lots, which has of, the future lot, La Fawn Residential subdivisions on the south side, the future one, those are gonna be draining lot to lot.
You know, one of, one of the problems that we used to have, and you may not have them anymore, is that you had developments that came in where you would drain lot to lot. And the minute somebody came in and built a structure, the next thing they did was they created a block fence. And so the lot to lot that was initially approved no longer flowed. And so you have some subdivisions, mine included, that basically if you get a two-inch rain, you get three or four foot of water inside your property at any point in time. Does that continue?
Oh, right now, we basically, the, the, they, they require us to put details on the plat so that when they go to the building permit, they are basically, they have to put in account for that especially. So we have details on the actual plat depicting the type of fence, how to build it, and make sure that they have proper drainage outlets so that that happens.
Is that being enforced?
That's being enforced through the building department, now granted. They must come in and get a permit and go through the proper, the proper procedures. If they don't, you could have that problem.
The, the solution to my, the, the stuff on my house, and it's twenty years old, is a little square about this big.
And that was gonna be my next question, how do you calculate?
My neighbors is a little square about that big.
How do you calculate the runoff that's coming off of those rooftops to be able to drain them out? And size the opening on the wall?
Well, that's being, I can address that, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Honorable Chairman, members of commission, Ramon Chavez, city engineer. So in twenty seventeen, there was an amendment to the ordinance where developers were allowed to drain to the back and to the neighbors. Before that, all development and all lots had to drain to the front. In twenty seventeen, we were against it. We did not, we were not recommending for it to proceed, but the council decided to move forward. We tried from the staff's end to try to put as much information as we could to make the engineer provide all that information that you're referring to, including details for the block fences, including all those calculations as, as of, related to the runoff. And, and we created some special drainage easements under that ordinance as well, where those were gonna be private and so on. Some of these cases, homeowners are responsible to maintain those special drainage easements. Because we were just not going to be going into private property and provide this maintenance. So, so that's what happened in twenty seventeen, pretty much.
Yeah, I remember that.
And, and that's where we included all these FHA details where that was already there. And, and that was just information that we wanted to utilize, again, just to provide as much as we could on the plat so that at least a homeowner, or that when they went to get a building permit, they're able to at least understand what they could do or not. Because you know that sometimes when builders come in, they'll just re-grade the lots and then you'll create a, a different issue.
Exactly, and that was, my question's gonna be that to you. You know, when, when you grade the property and create the lots, you know, under building code, if you go over, what is it, twenty-eight inches, you need to put a retaining wall.
Sure, yes.
Lot to lot. The issue with that becomes if you're draining and, and, and the drain is like this, slanted going a certain way, you're gonna get, you're taking water in from one side and you cut your own water and you're trying to get all that water out. And I just find it real difficult. And, I mean, on a normal, say half inch, maybe an inch.
Right.
Given the Laredo's very dry, maybe even up to an inch and a half, you'll be okay. But minute you get past that, I just see that you're gonna start getting, you know, especially when you have permutation of the soil and it becomes super, you know, moist, everything's gonna run. And I just see in the future that we're gonna have some issues there, kinda like what happened at University. Subdivision that we have off of Chilo.
Chilo.
I mean, I had to constantly deal with that because they started closing off, you know, the holes on the fences and we had four feet of water in the backyards.
It becomes an enforcement, it becomes an enforcement issue and unfortunately sometimes we don't have the manpower to.
And, and I know that, and that's really where I'm coming from now too, where we may need to address this ordinance again because I don't think the city's gonna have enough enforcement power to be able to handle this thing. We may need to bring this back early so that we can revisit it as a commission.
The, the, the problem is that, that buying a house is like buying a car. It's nice, it's shiny, whatever. And we're having these technical issues where we're discussing the floods, whatever. I can guarantee you, even I'm guilty of buying a house and not realizing that there's a flood deal in the back. And, and so people don't look at it. And you're expecting the people to be knowledgeable buyers and that they're gonna be aware of these things, they're not.
And, and so in that case, the plat is the only avenue that we had in order to advise somebody or at least somebody to take a look and see what, what they're buying. Because ultimately, the, the homeowner, the buyer is the one that is affected.
I guess I have another question on that, once you get the finished grades for the lots and the land, nobody from the city goes out and shoots to make sure that that's what it's supposed to be, right?
The engineer's responsible for the ass builds and, and for that grading plan, so they submit that information to the engineering department.
The private engineer. From the city.
The private engineer.
Right. But there's no verification, I mean, there's no spot checks on that.
Through, through the ass builds, they, that's what they.
Yeah, that's what they're turning in. I've been in construction a lot too, where I know what ass builds that are turned in are, are not the same as what's built. And I could venture to say that the subdivisions are the same, okay? And that's why I'm asking this question right now, that I don't think you have enough manpower. Or when we're doing the subdivisions and when we're approving development, we're approving certain grades. And the engineer, private engineer is responsible for turning that in to get it approved. We may wanna look at, and I know this is gonna be sounding kinda radical, but based on everybody's concerns here is, we might wanna look at, you know, what is a good design? Because I've seen a lot of lots that it's, it's really bad for the homeowner, you know? Yeah, you got your pad side and you bit the house, but you look at the backyard, it goes up, you know, maybe a couple of feet, three feet, or vice versa, it drops in the front. We may wanna revisit and look at this whole design issue of how do you grade properties to give the homeowners? Ninety-nine percent of the homeowners are not gonna know what's there. I mean, you can read everything you want to, but when you're closing, have you ever done closings? Thousand and one forms come for you to sign. You don't know what you're signing, you're just signing. And you're not gonna pay attention that, hey, until it's, until you get the problem, then you go, whoa, what the heck? That's when, that's when you get the issue. And that's when you get it, okay? So what I'm saying is, we need to figure out a way to work through all this stuff. I think if we're gonna create a dynamic city for the future, yeah, we need to look at a whole bunch of different issues that make it a very dynamic city where the individual homeowners that have no knowledge of construction, development, or anything can have a nice piece of property that they bought and that it works for everybody. I mean, I guess some of the better examples you can have is probably the older phases of, of the community where most of your land was flat. As we grow out, obviously, we have to deal with, you know, different elevations, creeks and everything else. But I think there's some things that we need to really look at again. I know we're supposed to try to figure out what we're gonna do with the, the land development codes. We may wanna revisit some of those issues because I think it's only fair, I mean, given, given the price of what's going on with housing right now, and then to get stuck with, oh my God, you got a drainage problem now or a drainage issue. I think we need to really revisit that and, yeah, I can understand what everybody's gonna say, well, you're gonna add cost to things. But let's face it, what does a homeowner want? Peace. You don't wanna have to be. So what are you gonna do? Block it. And that's what's gonna happen, because I have to deal with a lot of those. They blocked it and then the other guy calls in and says, hey, this is illegal, how are we gonna enforce this? It's just a mess.
Also more so with reduced setbacks now.
Yeah, we have reduced setbacks now, which makes it even a tougher issue on rear drainage. So there's a lot of things we now need to revisit on this stuff because there's so many changes that have come up that we need to do something a little bit different, I think, and that's my personal opinion, I don't know, I'm sure commission members here might have their own.
I, I agree, and also like, for example, right now here, we see all the, the subdivision, but there's a lot of lot empty, right?
But making that.
You know, so it, imagine that the water comes and it goes in through the back or, because there's nobody there. So the homeowner, he wants.
Nobody, does anybody have the grading? I mean, not the grading, the.
The elevation.
The elevations of, of the property.
I just wanna kinda get everybody to circle back around to what we're here today for. And this is consideration of the model rule subdivision?
I understand what we're here for.
I know.
This commission is here.
Off.
We're not getting off track, this commission here is investigating some things that we may want to change into the future, okay? So it's not like we're getting off track. So I disagree with you, all right?
Mr. Chairman, just a quick note, I remember this coming before the planning department and then city council. And this was pushed by the tech, the technical review committee, so it would probably be a good idea to revisit with them because they had all this research and things that they provided in order to get this approved.
Well, I think it's time to revisit it, period. You know, I mean, I know what information they submitted and everything, but, and I know that they were comparing the Laredo's development to San Antonio's development.
Yeah.
And, you know, every city is an individual city. I don't think we can, you know, cut and paste from different cities. But it's something that we need to maybe ask the planning director, the city engineer, and maybe we'll take a look at these things, not only so much the drainage, but maybe also the, the way the properties are, are developed and shaped and stuff. All right, so what are the wishes? I'm sorry, yes, sir?
Chairman, commissioners, I just, since you raised the issue about those walls and how water gets impounded in these lots, one situation that utilities that I'm dealing with in our sanitary sewer system is some of these homes that are impounding this water, they typically open up our cleanouts and drain their rainwater into our sewer. That overloads our system.
Big time.
So that's something that's occurring in the city. So I just wanna bring that to your attention so that when we do address this, address it in a point where they're not draining their lots into our cleanouts, because that overloads our system.
Okay.
Just for your information.
Thank you.
Wouldn't that be an issue of the building department when they approve the, the plumbing plans for the different households to where they would do the cleanouts on the front of the property and not on the back of the property, where usually that accumulation occurs? And so it's a matter of somebody being wiser in the building department to make sure they look for that.
Yes.
If that is an issue.
No, but the issue he's talking about is excess runoff going into his system.
No, but it's a cleanout at the very back. You open up the cleanout and you drain faster.
Yeah, but I think what he's talking about is your inlets, where you're, you know, they're off of the inlets, they get to a certain point where they're, they're jammed up.
They're jammed.
And then everything else goes into the sewer system, the manholes or whatever.
Those are manholes, cleanouts, cleanouts are broken and it's, it's a, it's a big.
It's, it's a big issue, I mean, and I don't think there's really a solution to that technically when it rains a lot. I mean, I wish there was, but I don't think so.
Water finds its way.
Exactly, exactly. All right, any other questions? All right, motion?
I move to approve the proposed action.
All right. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, the next item is the consideration of the extension of the final plat approval of the green subdivision phase ten B. Intent is residential. The plat extension will be for six months?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant is W W Escondido Engineering, engineer, I'm sorry, is it Delaware Consulting. Property, it's approximately seven point ninety-seven acre jack of land, located north of Fifteen fourteen seventy-two and east of People's Boulevard. The zoning for the sixty-seven lot development is R one P and the proposed use is residential and is asking for an extension. The proposed motion.
Motion?
I just, so there's, a final plat was approved?
Yes.
So what are we extending?
The final plat has to make either a recordation, improvements finished, letter of credit placed, so it can be recorded within that timeframe.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
I get it.
So he's not able, they haven't been able to accomplish any of that yet, so they're asking for another six months.
I got it.
How many, how many homes have been developed in green subdivision?
It's a good question, I don't have the information right now, so.
Does anybody, the planning department have an idea? That's a tough one.
The reason I ask is, I travel this road frequently and I notice that traffic or highway, state department is putting up traffic signals. But we're rapidly heading into the same situation that you have in Concord Hills. And you have only one way to get in and one way to get out. And, and you're gonna have a traffic signal because people can't get out, period, now. And we keep adding, we just approved two subdivisions with about two hundred lots or more in them. And so at what point do we require that there be another entrance and another exit?
It's definitely.
Or do we wait till it becomes a problem?
No, dealing with Tech Dot, they have to, they have to provide traffic impact analysis before they can even do it because they're, they're exiting onto a Tech Dot highway. And it's managed by Tech Dot, so as long as Tech Dot can, the numbers follow the guidelines of Tech Dot, they can do a development to come out onto that property. So.
Well, I guess, there's, there's no issue and we, we wait until there's a crisis?
Not that you wait for a crisis, but there's, there's so much capacity that can be used on that. And if they can't justify it, then definitely there needs to be a secondary, a secondary exit. Which is being proposed later in the property.
With the, the traffic.
So if you were to go outside to that property now and you sit there and you watch the queue, say from seven to eight in the morning, how long is the queue?
Okay.
Is it not a problem?
It, I mean, there could be traffic on it, but like I said, you know, it's a numbers game by the state to determine what's allowable.
I guess the next question I have on this is for fire.
Can we have somebody from Tech Stop coming in and talk to us about it?
Sure.
And tell us what their parameters are?
I have a question for fire.
Well, like you mentioned, if, if there's a proposed second exit coming, then the fire department accepted, there's an exception in the fire code.
All right.
It shows if it's proposed and it's shown that it's coming, then we, we have, there, there's an exception that we accepted. Because if we didn't, it would halt pretty much all development.
Well, I agree, I agree, but in this case, you know, I think we, I'm sure we have a little over thousand.
No, and, and.
Homes in that area.
And you do have that at your discretion, I mean, if, if they're coming up, just 'cause everybody else here said it's okay, I mean, if you feel it's gotten to the point where that secondary means entrance and exit is taking too long, I mean, it can be held up still.
Yeah.
But on, on our code, when they come to us, it's meeting code because of that exemption, so we have to give it to them.
Okay.
How, how long is the exception?
It doesn't have a timeframe.
It doesn't have a timeframe.
I guess my next question is, after this phase, do you have additional property master plan to build? Obviously, there's a proposed secondary exit, the intent is to continue developing, right? And how much more development is in, in this area?
Yes, of course, we have a master plan to build for the, for the plat.
How many more proposed lots do you have on the master plan to develop after this phase?
I mean, I'm not, I'm not involved in often this particular project, so I don't have the information right now, but I'm pretty sure people.
I think I'm gonna make this point to the planning department director. The engineer that needs to address this commission needs to be knowledgeable of what they're talking about. talking about, because we have questions that don't seem to have answers. And it becomes very critical to this commission, and what we're gonna be approving, we may not approve now, if we can't get the right answers. I mean, a lot of these questions are very, very pertinent questions that seem like, eh, it's no big deal, but they're a big deal. Especially in that northwest quadrant of the city where you have one major artery, which is really fourteen seventy-two. Yes, you're gonna have additional arteries out into the future by Asios and Ruthenjo Char, but those are three or four, five years away. And the only other exit out there is to go back up on Cas, uh, Tientas Road. Okay. So the extension was approved?
For another six months, um, this month is their last month and then.
Yeah.
The extension.
So. The model rules were also approved. Need a motion for the extension. Anybody willing to, make a motion?
I'll make a motion to extend.
Got a motion, second?
I'll second it.
It's on this plat?
Yeah, on, on this green one.
I, I abstain as well.
Green subdivision. Yeah. Okay, so there's a second. All those in favor, single, probably say aye.
Aye.
Anybody against? One abstention. Thank you all very much. This concludes the planning and zoning commission meeting. A move for adjournment and a second. Take it, all those in favor? What? Nobody said aye?